Okay, Robbie. Item one of the recommendations for planning zoning commission memo attached. Since they made no recommendation on either.
The memo that's been in there just is what it is.
Okay, so we won't talk about the sign, we won't talk about... Does it take it?
That's just the memo. Both the R and J.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's six thirty. On April the tenth, let the City of Grantville Council member, council meeting for work session come to order. Please rise for prayer and place your worship.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. A kingdom come, divine kingdom, earth and heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Lord is our God, and the power and the glory forever and ever. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item, citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Do we have any of those here, please?
No, sir.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. I have a motion.
Second.
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 All in favor? Okay. Item one, discussion on recommendations for planning zoning commission memo attached. Let me make a note, if those of you don't know, what's it, Robbie, about a week and a half ago? Mr. Greshaber? Mr. Greshaber, as a relate, from his accident in October, had knee damage. And about a week and a half ago, underwent knee replacement surgery. So he has been absent, well, he's been on the phone and on email. That is why he is not here. He has recovered very well. And if everything is good with his doctor's report tomorrow, we'll be back in the office on Thursday. So tonight, we are without Mr. Greshaber, so lying solo a little bit, all right? Discussion on recommendations for planning zoning commission memo attached. What this recommendation was is, we have a request from RISA, which belongs to the county, to put up a directional sign, one directional sign, on Griffin Street. Because as you all may or may not know, the RISA facility is way back toward the school, where you can't even see it. So a sign on this facility, you can't see, the war tower obstructs it. They wanted to put up a new sign, the current sign is on the ground. It's a larger sign, which is a zoning variance, meaning that it doesn't match our zoning for signs in the right of way. Do you want to add anything to that, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, just they submitted an application for a sign, the size of the sign.
Mr. Mitchell, please pull your microphone in front of you.
The size of the sign that they requested is not permitted by your zoning ordinance. They then sought to seek a variance from the council, but the council, but the zoning ordinance does not allow the council to grant a variance based upon size of sign. You can only grant a variance based upon, basically, location of the sign. If there's some hardship that's created by where a sign has to be located, there is the possibility for a variance, but not based upon the size of the sign. So a proposal was put before the planning commission to increase the maximum size of directional sign allowed from the current four square feet to sixteen square feet. And the planning commission voted to recommend denial of that amendment to the zoning ordinance.
And their denial was based on a statement which, you know, that if they approved that, then we would have large signs all over the place in the right of ways in Grantville. When there are restrictions on who can actually do that, in it would be religious organizations and city governments. Correct, Mr. Mitchell?
Well, certainly, placing a sign in the right of way would be, is, the options for that are very limited. But the amendment that was presented to the planning commission to increase the maximum size of directional sign allowed does not, is not limited to signs in the right of way, but would be anywhere.
So what the city manager and myself are back to the council about is, we feel like this is a one-off circumstance where that sign has to go on Griffin Street. It has to go in the right of way. They'd like a sign large enough because there's a lot of people who come to this facility from all over the place. And this is the county government, this is not an individual business and such. And so we are back in front of the council stating, look, we want to go about this a different way than simply allow them this one time to do this, to be good partners with Grantville. It's county, it's one time. And I understand, you're looking at me like, really?
Yeah, I have a question. So instead of, instead of changing it for the sign to be bigger all the time, why can't we just change the ordinance to allow for a variance for a size?
That would be another possibility to increase the circumstances under which a variance could be granted.
And then you're not giving everybody the...
No, it was clear in variance that we were trying to put through was it would only be for religious organizations and governments. So private business could not do this.
That comes from the definition of directional signage that is laid out in the ordinance.
So if, if we allow, this is a county sign. So it's a municipal, it's a government. According to the ordinance, we can do that, is that what you're saying?
According to the ordinance, there is a limitation on the size of the sign, that's the issue.
And no option for variance for size currently?
Well, where did the, okay, so you're recommending that it only be a religious organization or a city government?
No, I'm not recommending that, that was in what was put before the planning and zoning.
Okay, and they didn't.
Correct.
And I understand they're pulling them not opening up the county warrant, I do, I do. But here we are, we're talking about the city, the county, and our property, whether it be the right of way or even over in the edge, very edge of the cemetery. They're both belong to us, right?
Correct.
Well, I don't know, I feel like that we ought to allow a sign to be put there, but going back to the discussion they had, I agree, you don't want to open a county warrant on something. But this is government, and it is our property.
But either way, we have to change the ordinance to allow, because right now, the ordinance doesn't allow...
Doesn't allow for variance.
Or the variance, it doesn't allow bigger sign, or a variance for bigger sign.
Wait a minute, now, we have, the city has bigger signs in places, at our city hall.
We just put one up.
But we violated our own ordinance.
It's right up front, it's called senior sign.
Well, they just put new signs up at parks recently, I mean, I say in the last year or something, I mean, and...
They're bigger.
So if, I mean, the way I see it, if the city is capable of doing that within themselves, we ought to be able to put a larger sign over there for reason. But didn't we break our own law? Well, it shouldn't be written that the city can't put up the same, the size signs it wants for...
Parks, buses, or even the city hall.
But I can see where you could, would have to limit private to not doing that for... I don't know what the answer is, but I think they ought to have a bigger sign for reason. I don't know how you get there without opening up the county warrants, but that's the way I feel. I think they, they're part of our future, you know, they're part of our interest, so should they teach teachers.
Well, the definition of directional sign in the ordinance is that directional signs are permanent, off-premise, non-illuminated, ground signs erected only by churches, government agencies, and nonprofit organizations, which provide direction to such church, organization, agency, or related facility.
And that's the way the ordinance reads, Robbie?
Yes.
Okay.
And then in the table, the sign purpose directional sign is where you have the limitation of four square feet.
And they want six, they want, so it's two by two is the current, they want a four by four.
Well, I support that being explained.
And actually, the maximum number of signs, four directional signs, two per single location. Each location being one hundred feet from another, from the other location. So that actually can have two.
And they're asking for one sign.
Any of them belong to the county? Technically, the sign will belong to the county.
Yes.
The school board.
School board. So where does that leave us?
Well, currently, your ordinance does not allow a sign, a directional sign, size that they're requesting. And your ordinance does not allow you to grant a variance to permit that sign. And your request of the planning commission, that they consider this issue and report and recommend back to you, their recommendation is that you not revise your ordinance. Now, as Councilmember Houston has outlined, I think you've got two options. If you want to change something, you can either amend the ordinance to increase the size of the signs allowed over the recommendation of the planning commission.
Correct.
Or you can amend your ordinance to allow you to grant variances for directional signs. But short of doing one of those, you are not authorized by your ordinance to allow that sign to be placed there.
Okay, with that being said, where would the religious churches and governments come in to this question? I thought Robbie just said that was in the ordinance.
In the definition.
Yes. Churches, government agencies, and nonprofit organizations are the only entities that can have these directional signs that are mentioned in your sign ordinance.
Well, don't we consider RISA a government organization? I don't see what, with that, with that falls in there, I don't see what's the issue here.
Well, the issue is that your ordinance only allows those signs to be a maximum of four square feet.
Oh, even for the, okay, even for the...
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
I missed that, I thought that they could put up a bigger sign.
Those are, they are limited to four square feet.
We already do have larger signs under, even the way the ordinance is.
So my thought process on this is, do we, Mr. Mitchell, draw the language to create a variance that would allow them to have that capability as a, as a term of one-off? For the council to approve a one-time variance. And that way, it's in control, it's not like everybody can walk in front of you and say, we want a sign. You all can say, no.
Yeah, they could, if you put the language in there for a variance, then they each have to apply if they want a bigger sign, and then we can decide yes or no, is appropriate.
You can, currently, your ordinance dealing with variances, section fourteen point one-two says that variances can only be granted, again, based for placement of the sign. Now, we could amend that section to also allow the council to grant variances for directional signs. And so it would limit it to just that specific classification.
Mr. Mayor, another question, probably to the city attorney. We need language that permitted, I don't know who put that bigger sign up, if staff did it or how it got put up. But we need, we, if we have a law, we should be following the law. If we want the community to follow the law, then we should, you know, the city should follow its own laws. So if we've got a sign up that is a non-conforming or whatever, we need to deal with that issue. And at that time, we could also deal with permitting the county to put up this bigger sign. But it should be a size, the size that we've put up, it should be at least that size, so that we recover it. And this staff, they're there.
Well, the only thing I'll say is this, is I haven't gone out and measured it. I'm not really certain that the sign that we're talking about is actually in the right of way.
Well, this has nothing to do with the right of way. This has, the definition of directional signs has nothing to do with whether they're in the right of way or not.
But directional sign, by definition, is a sign that points to a location, correct? Whereas the sign up front, actually, now I'm thinking about it, does not do so.
Provides direction to such church, organization, agency.
Correct, so the sign up front, now that I'm thinking about it, doesn't do that. It just simply identifies that the senior center is there. It's no different than the sign we have up front at city hall.
That's right, so that's an identification sign, which a bigger sign is allowed for that.
Right, so my take on this is that what we need to do is, we'll take this back. I'll work with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Greshaber, we'll get some language to a variance. You concur with that, Mr. Mitchell?
I do concur with that, however, if that's the route we're going to go, it's going to have to go back to the planning commission again, because that's not what they consent. That, this would be a different amendment to the planning, to the zoning ordinance. And so it's going to have to go back to the planning commission again.
Okay.
Question. So if you put an identification sign over there, it could be the larger size.
The problem is, the problem is...
No, I'm asking, you keep referencing as directional. If you put an identification sign over, according to what he just read, it could be that size.
However, the issue is, the identification sign would have to be closer to the RISA property, which you will not be able to see from Griffin Street.
Well, you're right, I just didn't know if you could get away with it.
Okay, so I think the key is, we're going to go back a different way and do a different variance to put it back before planning, and we'll be back here in two months. Okay? That sounds like, that's our remedy, that's our remedy you seem to have. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, move on. Second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh H, repeal ordinance number seven oh one, adopted December tenth, nineteen ninety-eight, City of Grantville employee handle. Any comments, questions? Second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh nine, to amend chapter two of the Code of Ordinances to establish guidelines for the scheduling and conducting council meeting, council committee meetings. Comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor? My, my comment is, and is directed to, as I mentioned at the last meeting, that this appears that we're trying to amend or put restrictions on a charter.
Mr. Mitchell, your opinion, does it affect the charter?
It, it does put restrictions on the committees that are established by charter, but the charter provision that establishes those committees specifically allows you to make amendments of this nature by ordinance.
And where does it say that?
In section three dash, three point oh one of the charter, unless and other, unless and until otherwise provided by ordinance.
So you're saying that anything that's in the charter, you can do an ordinance to change it?
I'm not saying anything in the charter, I'm saying this because it specifically allows it to be addressed by ordinance. There are many other things in the charter that don't have that provision.
And you said that's three point...
Oh one.
Three point oh one. Three point oh one. I'd be different on that, but I don't see that, but I don't want to prolong this.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I do have a question. I, I've always been understanding that two councilmen made the recommendation something was put on the agenda. Now, I'm sure that if two councilmen made that recommendation, there would be some legitimacy to the topic. But basically, the way this reads, that the mayor and the city manager can still not put it on the agenda, even though it was proposed by two city councilmen.
I'm a little confused, what do you ask?
I, I just asked, if two city councilmen recommend something being put on the agenda, the mayor and the city manager can still choose not to put it on there in office, is that...
Those are, this ordinance amendment that we're talking about, that have to do with putting items on the agenda.
Okay, I jumped it, I'm jumped ship, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought that's what we were talking about when you were...
No, you're right.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, any other comments? All right, move on. Second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten, to amend section twenty-six dash three to the Code of Ordinances to revise the penalties for littering. We're just raising the minimum to five hundred dollars. Questions, comments? All right. Second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash eleven, to amend chapter twenty-nine, article one of the Code of Ordinances on destruction, defacing of city property. We'll have, that will be added and defined by the court. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, that's a section that refers to private signs. I had a question about that.
What do you mean by private signs?
Section twenty-nine point fifteen, defacing private signs.
Okay, but that's not city property.
What you're saying is, it shall be unlawful for any person to paste, glue, or fix in any manner any cardboard or paper advertisement, on or to mark with paint, crayon, or otherwise any private sign on building within the city without permission of their owner.
That has nothing to do with defacing city property.
I don't see why this is in here.
Because it's a private sign.
So that means if someone wanted to put some kind of derogatory sign on my bill, and I says, okay, they can do it, I'm giving them permission?
Your, it's your private property, I mean, if you choose to do so, I, I... I'm not sure why that's germane to this discussion.
Because we were talking about defacing public property, and then the last section is defacing private property.
But that is...
Private signs on buildings.
Okay, we, we don't have any ordinance about defacing city property, that's why we're adding it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Where it's new, we don't even have it. That's the ordinance.
Is this a new thing, or is this...
It's brand new.
Twenty-nine point fifteen, defacing private signs on buildings.
Okay, but again, that's private property, but this is city property.
That's not currently in the ordinance, all this is new.
Okay, so it'd be okay if somebody wanted to put a sign of a nude person on the side of my house, and I said, oh, that's okay?
If you gave your permission.
I gave my permission.
Yes.
Yes.
Unless it violates some other law. Now, there may be some other law that it violates, but this is to prohibit somebody from coming and painting on the side of your... Right now, if somebody came and painted something obscene or unobscene on the side of your building, your house or your building, the city currently doesn't have a law to address that.
Not her building. This is if somebody comes to the skate park and paints all over the skate park.
It covers the skate park too, that's correct.
This is what she's talking about.
Well, I don't know why it's in there, it's nothing, it's private property.
Right. Because that's, she's asked, it's in that ordinance that we're talking about, this is the last section.
Okay, I mean, we're not changing that in the ordinance, we're adding defacing of city property. We currently have no ordinance addressing defacing of city property.
That's true.
So that's what we're trying to just add there, that's all.
The author of this ordinance, I wonder why the author of this ordinance put that section in, it'd be facing private.
Well, I can address for something that might have been written twenty years ago, but I'm just saying, we don't have currently something to address defacing of city property. Currently, you, it's not something that we can bring to court. All right? Any other questions? All right. Discussion, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three twelve, amending chapter two, section two dash twenty-four, rules for regularly scheduled council meetings.
Yeah, this is your question.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I got a lot of ordinance changes here, I got confused. But going back to my question, if two council members request something to be put on the agenda, if the mayor... agenda, if the mayor and the city manager can still make a choice whether to put it on or not?
Only because the mayor actually is the chairman of council meeting. Now, if, if you, and, and again, what we're trying to do is clean up council meetings. Trying to make sure that when we're talking about stuff, we've got all the facts.
I understand what you're asking.
But if two of you come up with something and you kind of meet the criteria, so we actually have something to vote on. Sure. We can address the financials, we're not going to hash through where things come from in the budget, how we do this in council meeting, but if two of you come up with something and you hashed it out, absolutely, goes on the agenda.
Cause I'm, um, you know, in most cases, if it was two councilmen, you would have some.
Absolutely.
But the question is, if it can still, you and the city manager can choose to put it on or off, whether it's taken two councilmen.
Correct. Now, the purpose of this.
Yeah, that's right, I apologize. This, this ordinance, I'm like you, I'm getting mixed up with a number of amendments. This, all this ordinance changes is the day that request to place items on the agenda has to be submitted by the city, to the city clerk. Previously, it had been Wednesday, this changes it to Tuesday because of the fact of the four day work week.
Correct, that's all we're doing. Okay. Any other questions?
The other section, number 14, what is that changing?
That is correcting a, uh.
Typo?
That is correcting a typo in the current code. The second word, from, in the current code is form, it's misspelled, and so it is correcting that typographical error.
And where, where are you inserting these rules?
In section 2-24.
2-24?
Yes, ma'am. Of the code.
What number is it gonna be? Each one of these has a number, this page.
Yes, ma'am, and you'll see the numbers there in your proposal. This is amending 2 and 14.
So this is gonna, those rules are gonna be part of 14?
No, ma'am, this is amending 2, which currently says that requests to place items on the agenda have to be submitted by 12 noon on Wednesday. It's changing that to Tuesday, so that's 2. And then 14 is the one that has the typographical error in it that's being corrected.
Okay, now you have a whole page that has rules for agenda items. I'm asking, where in the code is this full page gonna be inserted?
It's not.
After number 2?
It's not.
It's not gonna be put in there?
No.
So what? So this is gonna be a resolution? What is this gonna be?
No, it's, it is the rules that have been identified by myself and the city manager for adding items to the agenda.
So where is it gonna go?
It's, it, you have it in your hands, it's where it's going to be.
It's attached to this ordinance?
No, it's not attached to that.
It's in my packet?
It is in there for informational purposes.
Right.
Okay, so it's not gonna appear in the code?
Correct.
So if we want to reference this, where will we find it in the future? It's not gonna be a resolution, it's not gonna be in the code, where is it gonna be?
The code is updated annually. When the code is updated, this will be put in.
What, now, hold on, what she's referring to is, I sent all the council members, in the last meeting, I stated what the rules were for submitting something to the agenda. So what I did, it was asked, I'd like it in writing, so I put it in writing.
Okay.
So you have it in writing.
But this applies to everybody, every council member?
Every, every one of them got it.
Okay, if we get a new council member up here, where's this person gonna get this?
I will send it to them as well.
If you're not the mayor?
If, if you get a different mayor, and they may not want.
It's gonna be lost, if it's not a resolution.
Ms. Berry, let me finish. If you get a new mayor, that mayor may decide different rules for council meetings. That's why it's not gonna be put in resolution.
And this falls under 2-24, paragraph 9, the mayor, as presiding officer of the council, may impose time limits and any other procedures deemed necessary for the effective operation of the council.
Correct.
Thank you.
Clark, you had something?
Uh, she pretty much covered it with that.
Okay.
I have one more question, ma'am, I'm sorry. Is it gonna delete citizen comments at the beginning of the agenda?
No.
We've got it in two places.
It is in two places. The citizen comments at the beginning are only comments that are allowed regarding agenda items. The citizen comments at the end have no rules, except for the standard rules, you have to state who you are, where you live, et cetera, you get three minutes, and you can make a comment about anything.
Okay, this is all persons addressing the council, and in brackets, it says, except at the public comment section of the agenda. So the public comment sections of the agenda. Once there's citizen comment regarding agenda items at the beginning, and then at the end, it says, citizen comments.
Correct.
So there's two sections, so shouldn't this, shouldn't it be S on the sections?
Should it be what?
A S, instead of section, referring to one section, it should say, sections, right? Cause there's two sections.
If it's a typo in the code, maybe it should be. Again, the code has many, many problems. We could spend a year rewriting the code reorganizing.
I'm talking about the code we're trying to amend today, a new code we're trying to put in today, an ordinance, except at the public comment section.
We're not changing that.
Shouldn't it say sections, cause we have more than one section? We have one at the beginning and one at the end.
Again, we're not addressing that tonight. It's not anything we're changing, all we're changing is Wednesday to Tuesday. We're not addressing that. That's not something we're, we're touching today. We're changing one word. Any other comments? Questions?
I do.
Okay.
Is this? I understand we're changing the date that the agenda's coming in, I, I understand that, but is the balance of this, does it read just like it did before?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so where is the old rule of thumb that two council members, is that in the charter somewhere?
Uh, the provision that, uh, relating to that is in the charter, but it only applies to calling a special need.
Correct.
Is it a practice that's found in Roberts Rules of Order?
There's no, it's not in Roberts Rules of Order, that's, there's never, that's never been a written rule or guideline for the council. That's a practice that the councils follow, but it's not, it's never been in writing. The only thing relating to two council members being able to take any action has to do with calling a special call meeting.
That answers my question. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Discussion, first reading ordinance 2023-13 amending the zoning ordinance to amend Article 4 zoning districts and boundaries, by adding district historic mill village and amend text for other purposes. So this was put before planning and zoning, uh, the information that they needed was not complete, it was missing a map, so we will be taking this back to planning and zoning in May table because of, of missing information. Questions, comments?
What map would it miss on?
They actually meant, they actually showed the outline of what the district was. Any others? All right. Discussion on Resolution 2023-07 adopting five principles of ethics approved by the GMA board and agreed upon by the City of Grantville Mayor and City Council. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor. We are a certified city of ethics. And we have a board, an ethics board, in, in Dracula, we still have that?
We currently do not.
Is that something that we're going to look into? Cause we, in the past, we had an ethics board, and then it expired in March. I think that board expired in March. I mentioned it at the last council meeting, and the city manager said, he was gonna bring it back in April, so, but I don't see it on the agenda, the ethics board.
Well, it's definitely something, um, we need to consider, understanding how that board is selected. Each council member picks three, the mayor picks three, that creates your ethics board in case we ever have an ethics issue.
So you plan to, uh, re-establish the ethics board in Grand Hill?
Well, like I said, I, I believe that it probably should be done, and we can address that in May.
In May, okay, thank you.
Okay. So I've been thinking of that, which three do you want on the ethics board, council?
It's two, each, each, each of your, point two.
Okay. All right, discussion on Resolution 2023-08 adopting the 2023 City of Grantville Personnel Policies, a tax exhibit A and non-incorporated union is fully set forth for bay, draft available upon request. The reason it is not in your packet, it is a work in progress, I've been reading it in Mr. Higgins, Mr. Chris Shaver, um, the reason we didn't put in, we weren't gonna kill that many trees, it's 100 pages long. If you would like to see the draft, you can request it. But I didn't feel like printing up 400 pages of paper. Particularly since it's currently in draft and we're still working on it. Save a little money. Questions, comments?
Come, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, we did a second reading. On an ordinance to, uh, to, uh, delete our handbook for the employees. So we don't have a handbook in process now, they don't have, when that goes into effect, will we have a handbook for them to follow?
Yes, we will.
For them to follow?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
All right, other questions? Okay. Discussion on Resolution 2023-09 accepting the fiscal year 2022 audited financial status prepared by Gerald G. Pentacost CPC for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. Comments, questions?
Is the auditor gonna be available for us to, to make a presentation on this audit? He usually attends.
Well, we, he did not attend this evening, and we have no way of bringing him currently. If we need to make sure he's here, we can do so when we have our next meeting, but I would ask that if you have questions, have them fully prepared and vetted ahead of time. I don't want to spend his time if nobody has any real questions. So you'll need to go through the audit in detail over the next two weeks.
He'll be at the next council meeting?
If, if needed, I'd like for you all to, I don't want to bring him in unless he absolutely have questions pertaining to the audit.
The last couple of years, I believe, we, um, was on RIO conference, and we still have the ability to see, like, we could dial out to his phone.
We absolutely can to his phone, we could do that. But I, after attending the one last year, nobody had any questions, so that's why I'm asking, you know, I don't type a man's time just to sit and have questions asked or questions of any relevance. So please take the time to read through the audit, read through any of the red lines, read through it all. Some of those can actually be answered by the city manager when he returns. Or Miss Higgins actually. All right?
Well, my question related to this issue of segregation of duties. So I do have some questions.
Of the auditor?
Of the audit.
Okay. All right.
So if he could be on audio, you know, virtual or whatever, that'd be fine.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Discussion on Resolution 2023-10 appoint voting delegate and alternate of the municipal gas authority, Georgia annual election. Right, I think the voting delegate on that is, who's assigned the voting delegate on that?
The mayor?
The mayor, I am.
Was an alternate of the mayor.
The mayor pro tempore. Okay. That's right, we covered that last time. All right? Questions? Discussion on recommendation for processing volunteers for boards and advisory committees. Ms. Berry, this is your item.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, it's not available to attend your meeting, wanted to attend today, but I'm trying to guess, so it was not available. But, um, this item is basically a, um, an item that I placed on my administrative committee agenda in January, it didn't get addressed, in February, no form, it didn't get addressed, in March, the meeting, you canceled my meeting, so this is April, this, so this is not anything new, I've been trying to get this in motion ever since I was, um, elected. And I, it wasn't, it didn't take me long to realize that there was some things that needed to be addressed as far as procedures. And this item is my request that we adopt a resolution that sets forth procedures for processing volunteers, that will include that all vacancies are advertised, and this advertisement would go out annually, to set forth, let everybody know these are the positions that we have in the city for appointments. It would include advertising when someone resigns, their term expires, or they're deceased, or they pass on. You have to advertise that seat as those vacancies occur. And this procedure was, would set forth that all applicants submit a written application, and they need to be referred by a council member. And each council member could, would be limited to one recommendation. If there's three vacancies, then you, you would have three different council members. If there's three vacancies, then you would have three different council members. It would require that there be a picture ID for each, attached to each application. And if the position would result in them having access to children, like in Parks and Recreation, a background investigation. And that they should not be appointed until they appear before the city council accepting the nomination. In other words, you have this application and they don't come forward, then we'd wait till they could come forward to say, yes, I accept the nomination. That would be in the procedure. And once they are appointed, if they are appointed, then they would be required to take an oath of office by the city clerk's office. They would be required to sign acknowledging they receive a copy of the ethics policy. And they would provide, especially if they're appointed to the planning commission, financial disclosure statement. Each appointed person would get an ID card, City of Grantville ID card. Similar to something like this. I'm an employee for Department of Agriculture. I wear this whenever I'm on official business. Each person that's appointed should have an ID badge that says who they are, has a picture on it. Doesn't cost that much. And when they are appointed, that they receive a certificate of appointment. When they take their oath of office, they receive a certificate of appointment. That states what their term of office is, it's right on there. And once you give them that certificate of appointment, you keep a copy in their file so you can have a tracking mechanism to know when their term is going to expire. In case they forget, then you let the city clerk's office to let them know, maybe a month advance, your term is about to expire if you want to reapply. You know, please submit your application. So this, a procedure. Each person that's applied should be given a mentor, someone that will kind of guide them along to say, well, you know, this should not be done, and that, this is the code. They should receive a copy of the code that's in our, in our in our municipal code or any procedures that they need to be aware of. So that they're new, they don't understand when they're doing something wrong, they should have it in writing. They should be trained. And annually, that we have a annual training for all board members required, attendance required. We give our certificates to those who, to show them that we acknowledge that their service, they're working without pay, putting in a lot of time and effort, spending their own money in many cases. So we should acknowledge all of our volunteers. We couldn't operate this city without our volunteers. They're very valuable, very important, and very much appreciated. Each board that we have, there should be a budget, line item budget saying what we're allocating for that board. They should know what the budget is and they need to stay within the budget. And they should have staff support. Each, the planning commission has staff support. And I don't know what other board has staff support, but each one should have somebody that they can rely on to help, to steer them in the right direction. And this procedure should be by resolution so that it would be easy to find. This procedure could probably be done in many cases by the city clerk's office. Because those are things that city clerks are trained in doing. I'm sure that Robbie understands what I'm talking about. So this, this item here that I put on the agenda was for us to set forth some procedures to minimize confusion, to minimize the possibility of us being sued because somebody that we appointed to advise us did something wrong. So that person's going to be sued or we and that person would be sued. So this would minimize the damage that we can that can result as a, as a, as a result of something that someone we had appointed to do a job to advise us on this. So that was my recommendation. And I'm frustrated because three months in a row, I wanted to bring this up and was kind of not able to do it. But I appreciate you permitting me to bring it up tonight. And I hope that we, and I'm willing to help, to help formalize this. I'm willing to work, you know, with the city manager, with Bobby or whoever, or even the members that you put on my board, my committee, Mr. Clark and Ms. Evans. We sit down and we put this together. So that's my, my recommendation. And hopefully I can get some, some support on this because one person making a recommendation with no support
Ms. Berry, let me just interject here. After last week of spending a lot of time with these very boards, I reread your, reread your item here and you know, I don't agree with everything you want to do, but there, let me just put it this way. You are, you are correct, you're not appointed. And if you could have attended the meeting today, Ms. Cody attended it with me, and if you will please get with her, you will find out that as of today, I recommended, not through the advisory committee, but as a separate group of experts to put in place many of the things you have recommended and other recommendations that you will come forward with to absolutely organize, train, do all the things, a lot of the things, not all of them, that you just talked about. So I would advise you to get with Ms. Cody as I laid out the things that need to be done. And I told her, I said, I anticipate this will take you several months. Yeah, you can handle it. And now, I told Ms. Cody, there is no staff that can help on this. We certainly print things out that you've come up with, but they're, they do not have time to do this. That's why I wanted you and Ms. Cody and various others to take this project on because we don't have time. I don't have time, the city doesn't have time, city management don't have time. So I would suggest you get with Ms. Cody, Ms. Cody, and listen to what we talked about today, okay?
Okay, so you were appointed, Ms. Cody, an advisor?
Well, I didn't appoint anybody. I really wanted to talk to two of you about this because in reading this, I felt there was a lot of merit in what you just said. Because we, these citizen committees have been hanging out in the wind. So I want you to talk to Ms. Cody about what we discussed and if you all concur, come back and go from there. All right?
Well, I would also like to know the position of the other two council members that were, that were on the committee with me.
Well, I recommend first you talk to Ms. Cody. And then you might have that question or you might not. Okay?
All I'm saying is if we got support, it'll get done. But if we spend a lot of time putting together something that we don't have any support for, I hear you talking, but I don't hear anybody else up here talking. It takes three people to approve something.
Well, again, what you're, what you're talking about doing is going to take probably two to three hundred hours of work. That's not going to happen in an administrative committee that meets for thirty minutes. There's a lot of work on what you proposed, a lot of work. And I'll ask Ms. Evans, I mean, what is your comment on this?
So I'm in agreement, we need procedures in place. Like the mayor said, I may not agree with all the things that you suggested, but I'm in agreement, we need to set something in place that states out this is what you're appointed to, this is what you're responsible for, and this is how you go about doing the business to bring your suggestions back to the council.
Mr. Clark?
I totally agree with everything you said.
Thank you.
Mr. Wecaster?
Well, I think I agree, the mayor and I visited a little bit about this, that we need to kind of reevaluate how we appoint committee members, where they come from originally. I think that, that might, the council might give the council duties to pick and choose who is potentials and then the council can decide and make sure that the duties of these committees are understood. And we just know where they're at, that they're, they're there for recommendations and they're there. They have a specific, I agree with that, the feedback that we talked about previously. I want that to go, when it's time, to go to a committee and look at the options, look at the costs, and then bring it back to the council. I think that's a very good subject.
Of course, we don't really have a committee that truly addresses that.
Well, there's a streets committee.
No, 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 no. So the only citizen committees we currently have.
Okay, I'm sorry, but that's a good example of referring back something to a committee. But I agree that we need to kind of get a definition of.
But again, please speak with Ms. Cody and then I think you will get a very good picture of what is being looked for. Okay?
Okay, I'm just I would be happy to work with Ms. Cody. I know she was a previous board member. And right now, I don't believe she has been assigned to any particular board.
She's not been assigned to a board? I wanted to speak specifically with you and her today because her, she's not on a specific board. However, she has lots of inherent knowledge of this place. And I think, I think it's wrong to not tap into that knowledge, inherent knowledge of the things that could be done to achieve the framework of what you put out there. It needs a lot more fleshing out. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Very much.
All right, announcements. Initial notice, the 2023 Gas Authority Annual Election will be held Friday, May the 5th, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. I apologize, this is when I forgot to ask, Mr. Roddy, do you know who is on that election?
The mayor?
Okay.
Makes the vote.
Okay.
Unless you cannot.
I can make the vote.
And then if you cannot do that.
Then the mayor pro tempore. Okay. All right. City Hall will work Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The city hall lobby will be open for walk-in services Thursday from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All right? Police department operations are not affected by that. Any emergencies, dial 911. And I want to interject something too for the citizens, I know this is recorded, is, is for public works, we certainly respond on emergency basis. And if you all notice a significant, like, leak, believe it or not, right now, the process, and I hope to change this in the future, is to dial 911 and report that leak. It will then come back to Public Works to get that done. But I would caution, make sure it's a significant leak, not just a little dribble because we're trying to address all the leaks, but that's, that's just one example of how to deal with that. One day we will fix that to where we'll have an online capability where you can report it. All right? Senior Activity Center is open from Monday through Friday as normal. All right? Citizens, comments?
Can I say something? I didn't fill a paper out.
Okay, come on. You know the drill, right? Maybe you need to fill it out after the fact.
Do I have to get it?
Yeah, we probably do. So just do it after the fact.
Okay, after the fact.
Because we need it for the record.
I picked up, I'll do it for you. Okay, I'm Kathy Southern. I live on Mid-Church Street. I'm just curious as to what happened to the board in Recreation. I'm at the, what is it?
Recreation Board.
Recreation Department, because David was doing such a good job. And I'm just curious as to know what happened. I was supposed to have a few other people come with us, I today, they didn't come.
A lot of that has been explained and I just don't think it's worth the point now to continue on. We need to move forward.
Is it gonna be done again? I mean, is he gonna be able to do it again?
I will be honest, it is probably not going to be filled again until Ms. Berry completes her task. Because I feel like at this point, and I'm being blunt, I'm not going to control that, just my feeling is, is Berry, until you complete your task, because guess what? You may change the rules on all that. You can talk.
So it's up to you.
Well, Ms. Cody and I and the city clerk, we will put it all together as quickly as we can, but I think that in the interim, as far as the services that are being offered, that probably could commence as soon as we hire the supervisor, correct?
Well, no, because
Supervisor?
The supervisor has a list of responsibilities and priority number one is identifying resource needs, city employee resource needs. And bluntly, folks, number two, it's April. We need to open Splashpad. We have no one to work the Splashpad and no one has been trained to even work the chemicals or anything. That's priority number one, or it's not going to open.
So you don't have nobody to open it, right?
You're, you are correct. So hopefully we'll get this position hired quickly. We will work around what we can, but we're trying to find three people, some will work, right? Usually college, high school, to work at Splashpad. We're challenged, trust me.
So it has nothing to do with what David was doing?
Correct.
Because he was doing a great job. I, I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay.
So it's up to you to start it over again. That's what he said.
No, it's up to, it's up to her. What we're saying is her, with what she outlined, with very important framework of what a citizen committee needs to be able to do and qualified to do. So what, what, there's no point in just refilling it to then turn around and go, well, they're not qualified or they're not this, and that's why she's got to do what she's got to do.
Incredible.
All right?
Okay, I just thought I'd give my two cents.
Okay.
Okay, but do you want to call this out?
All right?
Okay. I got a pen, you got a pen?
Any other comments?
I still have a pen.
All right. Let's start with Mr. Mitchell. Any comments, Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Mayor.
Mr. Wecaster?
No.
Ms. Evans? Mr. Clark? Ms. Berry?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight as usual to, to observe us as we work to serve you. And I know that you could be doing something else more pleasant than sitting up here listening to us, but you're here and that means you care. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with Ms. Cody to come up with some suggestions for processing of volunteers and we'll do the best we can. If you have any suggestions, feel free to submit those to the city clerks, bring it down to city hall and send these as suggestions or put something in the mayor's suggestion box to make Grantville a real exciting place to be and progressive and working together and with harmony. And I want to, you know, extend an invitation to you, you can drop by Bonnie Castle if you want and have some tea with Dee. So thank you for coming. Thank you.
The city council, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all for caring. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.